All right, so we're going to call a meeting to order. Kelly, would you please have the roll call?
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Barnett?
Here.
Councilmember Spur?
President.
And Mayor Barnes?
Here. All right, now the pledge of allegiance. Kevin?
Please pledge after a reading. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, acceptance of agenda. Do we have any urgency items?
No.
No.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have the consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. Waive the reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of September 3, 2019. Approve the warrant register of September 23, 2019. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency but Mendocino complex fire. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency for the February 2019 storms. Approve Amendment 1 to Event Application 2019-018 Pumpkin Festival with staff recommendations to change the street closure start time to 7:00 a.m. Approve the corrected appropriations limit of $12,352,299 in fiscal year 2018-19 and $12,886,871 in fiscal year 2019-20. For the city of Lakeport, adopt the proposed resolution. Authorize the city manager to execute contract amendment with Tyler Technologies. Direct the city of Lakeport's voting delegate to the League of California Cities Annual Conference to support the two resolutions provided in the annual conference resolution packet. Authorize the cancellation of the regular meeting of October 15, 2019. Receive and file a 2019 Police After Action Report on the independent state fireworks operations. Would any member of the council care to pull any of these items? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
Second? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public input. Do we have any public input forms? Filled out? All right. Well, if there's anyone from the public who has any public input, they can come up and speak about anything that is not already on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to presentation. The Lakeport Main Street Association will present the winners of the People's Choice Awards from the Taste of Lake County event.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name, if you don't know me, my name is Barbara Brunnick, and I'm president of Lakeport Main Street Association. And this is our executive, um, aren't you?
Yeah.
Panetalia. So, if you don't know us, here we are, but you all knew us anyway.
I'm the executive director.
Yes, that's what she is. She's an executive director of a lot of things, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, we are here to present the winners of the Taste of Lake County.
People's Choice Award.
Yeah, well, I was getting there. Seabird team. Anyway, we have for the best brewery, we have Almira Brothers. Are they here?
They're too busy brewing beer.
Oh, my God, I didn't think I saw them. Anyway, we have a beautiful plaque for them, and so we will present them. And it's so, the city helps us so much. It greatly, greatly helps. You have no idea how much we appreciate you, everything you do. We don't say any bad things about you.
No.
No, it's a principle.
Not in public.
Not in public.
We never say that.
Okay, now we have for the best winery, we have Mount Canotta Wine Brewery that won this year for 2019. And are they here?
They're too busy making wine.
Everybody, executive director.
I did, and they also did. Sorry.
Anyway, they have the wrong night, Dave. And for the best restaurant, we had Robinson Rancheria Grill. And I think this is the second time they won. Come on, Orin. This is, I think, the year before last they won. And everybody loved their food. So, congratulations to both. Panet, you're supposed to take our pictures.
I am.
And go to the beautiful. He's got one, if you want to be in the picture. Yeah, Panet, I'd like a picture. Yeah, take your coat off, you're very presentable. Thank you. Here, come on, Panet, you're taller than I am. I'm shorter, it's why. Yes, we're ready. Thank you.
Got it.
Got it. Thank you. And thank you. There you go. And here, let me get you your box. You have a box? Let me get you some paper. And isn't it nice that you were here?
It was very, very tasty.
Thank you very, very much. We would like to thank everybody that participated in our event. And guess what's coming up Saturday? Well, Dia, Dia, say it. The name of it, it's a pumpkin festival. So, thank you, we hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's what we're here for.
Congratulations. I went into Robinson to have dinner not too long ago. And I've got to say, you guys have really stepped up the food there. It was very good.
Thank you. It was very good, surprise, huh? We had a lot.
Well, I used to work at Robinson a number of years ago, and they have definitely increased the quality of their food.
Yes, they have.
So, you're doing a really good job.
Everybody else could have gotten that spill if they would have been here for some.
They could have. But they didn't.
It didn't work fair.
I'm going to go trace some wine here. Bye, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Proclamation, okay, so proclamation declaring the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Lakeport. I would like to invite Lisa Morrow, Sherri Young, Lisa Morrow, who is the executive director, Sherri Young, who is the director of Victim Services, and Amber Westfall, who is the DV program coordinator. And this is for DV advocates, I'm sorry, Kim Leighton, Kayla Bogus, and Catherine Fiosco. And I'm sorry, what organization is this? I apologize.
We are a resource center.
I knew that, thank you.
Kayla Bogus?
Kayla Bogus.
Yes. And the other two that you mentioned are not here with us. Where are they?
Well, I have a proclamation here. Proclamation. Designating the month of October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lakeport. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from domestic violence are often severe and long-lasting, and whereas in the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, Lake County law enforcement responded to over 362 incidents, incidences, incidents of domestic violence, including men, women, and children. In the past 12 months, the Victim Witness Division of the District Attorney's Office has served over 311 victims of domestic violence, and the District Attorney's Office has prosecuted 352 felony and misdemeanor acts of domestic violence. Lake Family Resource Center responded to 793 crisis line calls, served victims, and additionally sheltered 149 domestic violence victims and their children for a total of 5,458 bed nights. Whereas it is critically important to hold perpetrators responsible for assault and to prevent domestic violence at every opportunity, and whereas family violence is a community problem, stopping the cycle requires not only the strength and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all members of the community. And whereas many organizations such as the District Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Lakeport Police Department, Clear Lake Police Department, and Lake Family Resource Center are committed to ending domestic violence in Lake County and provide essential crisis intervention and prevention services to all members of our community. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Lakeport does hereby, does hereby designate October 2019 Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Lakeport, and our community is urged to support the efforts of the agencies assisting victims of domestic violence and to increase their involvement in efforts to prevent domestic violence, thereby strengthening our community and creating an environment which honors, nurtures, and protects all members of every family. I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Lakeport to be affixed this first day of October.
Hi, everybody. I was told I had to say something. So, thank you. I want to first off just thank the council and the city of Lakeport for proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month within the city. Lake Family Resource Center, excuse me, we do a lot to raise awareness, and we have multiple events throughout the month of October, and you guys are taking us off here tonight, October 1st, so thank you. I just want to say, in proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness Month, what this city is doing is you are observing a nationally recognized month, but you're also speaking out. And in doing so, you're reducing stigma so that survivors of violence can come forward and assist the environment. And as a community, we are able to hold perpetrators of violence accountable in doing so, so thank you.
Thank you. Trick or treat came early. Thank you, ladies, very much.
Thank you.
So, while Brad's passing around some pins, we'll turn it over to Margaret for the Underground Utilities District. This is a public hearing.
Before we begin, I would like to note a recusal from this item. Councilman Mayor Potem Spur and Councilwoman Farlet both have an interest in real property, which is a residence that is within 500 feet of this proposed underground utility district. And as a result of that, they're going to be leaving the dais and giving no part.
Thank you.
So, when they, that's a room.
And I'm going to have Devin Ingram present the item. We've been both working on this item, and we've been looking at the structure.
Cross over the threshold, we're good to go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers who are left. As indicated in the staff report, the principal driver for this item this evening is to protect our existing Rule 28 monies from future takings similar to that which we recently experienced by reference in the Live Oak project. Without the establishment of a specific underground utility district, the credits that the city currently receives through the Rule 28 program are considered unallocated and therefore are subject to future takes. Being a small rural community, we do not receive a huge amount of credits annually. It's taken, I think, approximately 10 years, is that correct, Margaret? I think to kind of get to.
It's anywhere between that. I've been here 10 years, and it's been accumulating.
Accumulating that, and we're only at about 980,000, which sounds like a lot, but when you start to look at what the cost of some of these projects, you know, would be, you're talking about multi-million dollar projects. So, it's very important for us to establish this district so that we can protect these monies and make sure that we're able to do some future underground projects. During a previous council meeting on the subject, the 11th Street and North Main corridors were selected as the highest priority for undergrounding due to its feature as gateways to the community and their high value as pedestrian corridors. The placement of existing utility lines specifically on 11th Street obstructed pedestrian way and can make access to these areas very difficult. It is the intent of the city as specified in Section 2 of the formation of this resolution to not start undergrounding work until enough Rule 28 credits to complete the entire project are accumulated, which unfortunately could be several years. PG&E is right now, I think, working with the CPUC, or the CPUC is working on doing some potential amendments to the Rule 28 program that may fundamentally change how these are, maybe future grants that are available. And we'll continue to monitor that progress, if there's a way of making sure that we can, you know, accomplish this project in a sooner timeframe. The city sent out legal notices to affected property owners and did receive a few inquiries from interested parties, the most notable being represented from Safeway, whom you received a couple of letters from at our last meeting, and then a mail letter this evening that I think everybody has in hand. It's actually listed from Albertson's, but that's the parent company of Safeway. Their specific concern involves that the potential responsibility and the cost that property owners noted in the Lakeport Municipal Code, Chapter 13.16, specifically Section 090. This section does allow a mechanism for the city to require the participation of work with property owners. However, as stated in the resolution, it's the city's intent to not move forward with, you know, physically charging the property owners, but rather to accumulate those Rule 28 monies to pay for it. Regardless of that, the only potential area where property owners would be responsible for work is just for that portion of property from their meter to the existing line. They wouldn't be charged for any, you know, proportional rating of the entire project along the corridor. And that seemed to be the major contention that we were having with Albertson's. I think in our last couple of weeks, we've had several conversations with them. I think we've cleared that up decently well, and you'll see that there is a slight amendment to Section 4 that the city made. Safeway did agree to that, and we did have it vetted through PG&E to make sure that we didn't undermine the integrity of the resolution and the establishment of it. The submitted changes that Albertson's presented in their October 1st, 2019, we just, we did not have a whole lot of time to look at it, but the changes that we did look, they don't appear to be substantive or add or subtract any merit from the current resolution in being that we don't have time to have PG&E look it over and make sure that we're not undermining, you know, the resolution. Staff would suggest to council to continue to move forward with establishing this undergrounding district this evening. I think if council does decide to approve the proposed resolution this evening, our Lakeport Municipal Code does provide a requirement for notification to property owners, and we would, of course, be doing that shortly thereafter. Of course, open to any questions if they happen.
Thank you, Kevin. So, from what I'm understanding is we are just wanting to establish the underground district tonight. We're not actually going to move forward on anything until we have the money from the Rule 28. And let's just say it's been doing for the past 10 years.
I think we gave about 3,000 or 400,000 in the last 9 years, 10 years, so it's very slow.
So, 400,000 over the last 10 years, maybe we're getting about $40,000 a year, approximate. So, how much would a project like this cost?
I think PG&E gave us a very rough estimate of, I mean, a project like this would be at least, you know, $5 million. Then that would be for the entire corridor probably. I mean, if there's a possibility, I mean, that the main, the strongest, the biggest issue seemed to be concentrated there, kind of pull, pull Street to Main Street, where the roadway narrows and that, where the obstruction on the sidewalks is really clear. So, I mean, we're going to continue to look, I mean, this is not just a problem for Lakeport. These are problems that rural communities face all the time, and, you know, we're being cautiously optimistic that the CPUC is going to examine the structure of this and maybe come up with some other ways of doing this so we don't have to wait 40 or 50 years between potential projects. And, you know, the cost of these projects, of course, is not going down for sure and is, you know, escalating rapidly. So, if that does change and if they create a grant structure or some other mechanism, we would certainly look at how we can best take advantage of that situation.
It's just rough, and I could have done it wrong, but rough math on it would be, to get a million dollars out of that would be about 25 years. So, we're not talking, we're, really, this is just about not losing the little bit of money we've been able to put together. This is, yeah, it's not about, I'm sorry, this is about not losing the little bit of money we've been able to put together, not necessarily digging up dirt next week.
Right.
Because it's, it takes 25, almost 25 years to amount to get the money that we have in there right now.
We will continue looking for any draft opportunities.
Sure, absolutely.
That because we do realize that, you know, we really do want to fix that corridor, especially on the eastern end of 11th Street, but we don't have the funding at this time.
Right. I mean, this was all just to say that it's not something that's going to happen probably within the next few years would be optimistic.
Yeah, I mean, you can take a look at like the South Main Street, so they were widening project. It does have some Rule 28 monies that are looking at undergrounding there. I mean, there may be some options where we can leverage our existing money against other funding sources, but yeah, correct, I mean, the likelihood of that happening in the next couple of years is pretty slim. That project in itself has been taking over, you know, a decade plus, you know, for various, you know, reasons. I'm not under anybody's control.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else in the council? Okay, so at this point, I will open the public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening. Nancy Rezika. At the last hearing I attended on this, I asked that High Street be included. High Street Village is 50 years old and has been around a lot longer than Willow Tree. And there's pools all in the sidewalk, non-sidewalk, no cement, a lot of walkers, a lot of bus riders. And I don't know what the good is in coming down here and speaking up when things don't even get considered. I met one of my neighbors in the Safeway line a certain hour ago, and he said, I didn't bother, I didn't bother to go down there. Yes, we should have undergrounding on High Street. We've contributed to these funds, and if we ask to be included, what harm would it be to include us? You know, are we going to wait 25 years with the year-old retail that can generate a lot of sales tax for you? It's been a real struggle. You concentrate so much on going south, and your main arterial, don't forget the rest of us, we've been paying taxes a lot longer on our improvements. And so, I'd like the record to reflect that I object to this because you're not including High Street a major, it's the old highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Bring it back to council.
Kevin, does High Street, does the section that Nancy was referring to, does it meet this criteria?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly could. I mean, it's just, our reasoning, I'm not adding it, was just, I mean, as the mayor can point it out, this is really more about just protecting the, you know, the monies that we have rather than, you know, thinking that these are going to be done right away. We moved forward and didn't add High Street because we have already got this far with PG&E. We didn't want to endanger, we have an ongoing appeal with them right now so that we don't lose an existing $4,000 from these credits to go to that Live Oak project. So, we didn't want to change up too much. But there really is nothing that stops us from coming back and adding additional underground areas. And if that's something the council wants us to look at, I mean, it just, we didn't add it to this one because we didn't want to slow down the process and endanger the appeal that we already have with PG&E.
Yeah, Kevin was saying, after we, the conversation with PG&E, they said it might dilute our appeal at this time. We wanted to get this done, but there's nothing saying that we, once we adopt this, we get it approved by CPUC, PG&E, and then we come back and amend the, it's not that difficult to amend it to add High Street. So, that was, but I believe the intention was of a council that would come back and amend it to include High Street. So, as we get past this step.
I seem to recall that from the last meeting.
That's what we spoke about last time. So, Nancy, it's not that we don't want to add it in, it's strictly a timing issue. Right now, we're just trying to beat the clock. So, we're not trying to eliminate anything, but this map's done. If we were to try and add it in right now, we're going to miss the deadline. So, we're going to complete this, but we're going to come back to it. We'd like to see the whole city underground and definitely High Street in the shopping centers. So, it's not that we're not listening to you or don't want to add that in. It's just we're trying to beat a deadline right now, and then we'll come back to it and revisit it.
Right, and then once we beat this deadline, we have those funds secured. Before we break ground on any of this, it's probably going to be four or five years or so. So, we have, we have years to add in High Street and every other street that we want to add in.
And we can come back soon after.
Right.
The approvals, we don't have to wait that long.
Right. So, that people, you know.
We don't want to jeopardize losing what we have.
Right.
That's the point, meeting that timeline as well. I know that the League of California Cities at our annual conference, the Environmental Quality Policy Committee is going to take a look at a resolution presented to encourage the CPUC to add projects in the very high fire hazard severity zones as one of the criteria, given the fact that undergrounding is looked at as one of the solutions to help mitigate towards future wildfires. Additionally, what I was told when we were preparing for that meeting is that there are possible amendments already being talked about, about making it easier or maybe allowing for additional reallocations of these funds, so taking them away from other jurisdictions for, that don't have those districts. So, I strongly agree that right now, it's definitely a times of the essence to establish this district, and then how we modify it to meet all the areas for undergrounding in the future is also a priority after that.
Does that put you at ease at all? Does that, does that make you feel heard? When we do this and we get this passed?
I think you had plenty of time to amend it, but anyway, whatever.
Okay, then. That being said.
I, Mr. Mayor, would you close the public hearing?
Yeah, I closed it a while ago.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I'll move to adopt a resolution forming the 11th Street and North Main Street Underground Utility District. Second?
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brad's going to be missing too. All right, next we have council business. I'm going to turn it over to Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as the mayor and council should be aware, back in.
So as the mayor and council should be aware, back in 2016, the council authorized the police department to accept a United States Department of Justice Officer Community Oriented Policing Grant to implement a business and community officer program. The intent at the time was to have one officer work full-time on dealing with neighborhood groups, community groups, businesses, to try to implement some crime prevention programs and improve our communication and relationships with all of those groups, with the ultimate goal of keeping the city safer and reducing crime. With the ongoing law enforcement staffing crisis that not only affects just us, but is going on throughout the nation right now, it's been increasingly difficult to keep our staffing members at our authorized budget of strength. The way that that grant was written at the time is we were required to have our budgeted staff in place and working to be able to draw the United States Department of Justice fund. So we were having a difficult time maintaining those numbers, as the council's aware. So the three years came up this fall and earlier in the summer, I decided, because this is important, I believe this program's so important, we contacted the cops office and I made a request to, one, extend the grant another three years, and two, to modify the methods of implementing the program so that I could ensure that we were, most importantly, doing this community policing work regardless of our staffing levels, and then also be able to, to actually request and draw the money regardless of staffing levels. So based on the proposal that the police administration put together and the new community policing plan, they approved our request. So basically what that means is, as long as, even if we're short on budget numbers, as long as we are doing our recruitment process and trying to keep those positions filled, then I can still draw the money. And more importantly to me is I can do the work with this new program. So the way it's implemented now is, rather than having one officer do all the work, we have split it up across the entire department. And we've broken the city down into nine different sections. And those sections were planned out based on, you know, the lines were drawn based on business and neighborhood watch groups that we have in the city, which by the way, I believe we have, we have 10 neighborhood watch groups that we actually have live communication with and another six more, I believe, that are online-based that we can communicate with through the Nextdoor program, but they're not, we're not meeting with them, we don't talk to them regularly, it's all online-based. And so, so now with these sections, we've taken and we've assigned different officers to different sections of town. And so their responsibility now, if they have, let's say, from 11th Street north to the city limits as an example, they would be responsible to do outreach to those businesses in that area. They would also be the liaison and the person, the contact person for the neighborhood watch or the community group in that, in that section. And then we'll also continue to communicate, because most of those, the majority of those 10 are also on Nextdoor, so we can still communicate with them there, but we'll also do phone communication, go to their meetings and communicate through email. So based on the way we've got it set up, even if our staffing numbers drop, which, which they are right now, we're down, we're currently down one and a half positions, I can still get this work done because it's implemented into the officers' workday now. If staffing drives too short, we might be more limited on how much we can actually do, but regardless, we can get something done, we can get the most important work done, which is staying in communication and keeping the relationships with the business groups and the, and the community groups with the goal of making the city safer. So we rolled that out, basically, we've been doing work on it since July 1st and rolled the main program out to the officers back around the 1st of September. And now we're in, we're in the first reporting cycle with federal government and draw cycle. So this month, I will be able to report to them on what we've done as far as the community policing, and then also request a draw of three months' worth of money for that grant. So, so it's benefiting in several ways, making money, to me more importantly, the outreach and the communication with the groups. And we've already, you know, had some good success with it with officers, having more ability now to directly put stuff out rather than it all going through the administration or supervisory process. So another thing that we've got developed with that is we have now special NICSOL communication groups that are only for businesses or neighborhood watches, they're two separate ones. So those, you know, opt-in numbers or keywords would not be released to the general public because we only want neighborhood watch groups in this particular event or businesses in this particular event because that information is going directly to them to benefit the program. And then, of course, everything that affects the, that we believe that the entire community needs to know will go through the normal NICSOL and press release channels. So these are extra special communication tools where we can just let neighborhood watch people know what they need to know, whereas it might be something that we don't want to be putting out across the city. So all of that combined, we believe will hopefully, regardless of our staffing levels, allow us to continue community policing and keep those connections, keep the relationships built. And because the bottom line is the more people that we're connected to, the more people that have a relationship with us and feel like they can, they're comfortable talking to us, the more crimes we're going to solve, the ultimately keep the city safer. So that's, that's really kind of a synopsis of where we're going with this program now. And I believe it'll be a lot more successful than our original plan, which, you know, I don't know if we, at this point, ever, ever be able to get to having that one guy just have the time to do it all. So another key benefit to it is with the, all the very new officers we have now, they're going to get to know the business and the community people a lot quicker because we're putting them in a situation where they have to go out there, they got to make those connections, where before, it might take them a long time to meet a lot of people. So that's, that's the summary of it. If I take any questions, if they're...
So Chief, you have a number of people going to different locations to talk to different groups of people throughout the city?
Yes.
Okay, so just like you have a PIO during an emergency or whatever, so you get a, you know, one unified message, have you had to do special staff training on what you're going to say or what you're allowed to say, or so that they are all kind of presenting the same story?
Yes. We've given the staff direction on what we want going out to the businesses when they go in and introduce themselves and what information we want them to know to be able to connect with us properly. So, yeah, I think we have that covered, there's going to be updates to it and ongoing tweaks and changes to it as we, as we continue it, but I think for the most part, they do have what they need right now to get the right message out.
But incidentally, that was great that you could go after that in that different manner, knowing that you couldn't fulfill the requirements and ask for that and get that, so I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I'm happy that we're able to present that a package that they were, they were happy with and felt like, because really the bottom line is they want to see the community policing and the connections, so, you know, they're not just going to give you money to say that you're going to do something, you've got to actually show some progress. And so now we've got to put together the reports on showing them what we've done and hopefully, I'm confident that those are going to pass the submission on the first round.
Awesome. I like your strategy of having like 10 different sections and everybody gets a section type thing, because once you lose an officer, and if that officer was the only one involved in this, then you lose all the knowledge. Whereas if you have 10 officers doing 10 different sections, if you lose one, the other ones can step in to cover that section as a backup, so you get somebody to come back in. So to me, it's sort of redundant.
Right, and there will be, we will be doing rotations as shifts change, so the officers will change areas, so they'll get to, eventually they'll work every area in the city.
That's cool. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Three words, thank you. Is there anything else? All right, thank you very much, Chief. Next, we will go to Doug. Oh, I'm sorry, was there any public comments on that? I apologize. Seeing none, now we will move on to Doug. I'm just anxious to hear from Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm going to be speaking on Paul's behalf, he has an assignment working this evening. Was before council is a request for authorization for the city manager to sign a purchase order for the procurement of a three-quarter time utility truck from Mizzay Chevrolet. This vehicle was put out to bid, there were three bids that were sent out, Mizzay Corning Ford and Victory Chevrolet. We received two bids back with one decline. The actual low bid was Corning Ford, but with the local preference that was applied to Mizzay's bid, they, they are the lowest with that preference. So we were requesting to purchase from them, which is good news, it doesn't happen a lot. So, and what we're going to be replacing is a 2003 F-250, it's the vehicle that Jim Kennedy drives, and it's definitely seen us better days. And so we're really excited to be able to buy locally and to be able to continue to try to replace our aging fleet.
Thank you. And just to clarify, the local preferences, when we get a vendor who is bidding on something here and they're local, they have to be within 10%, correct? It can be 10% over the lowest, the actual lowest bid?
Right, when you calculate who the lowest is, you basically multiply by 90% the value that they include.
Okay.
This looks really close, like $45 difference or something.
Wow.
Thank you. I would request when you, if there is going to be a motion on this, that we include the name of Mizzay Chevrolet in the, in the motion itself, that right now doesn't indicate the vendor.
Thank you. Anything from council? Seeing none, any public comment? All right, then I will bring it back to council and entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would authorize the city manager to sign the purchase order with Mizzay Chevrolet and supporting documents for the procurement of a service truck for the Public Works Department.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, City Council Communications. Margaret?
That's a really brief one. The city's been notified that we are, notice of intent that we submitted to CalOES and to FEMA for a hazard mitigation grant has been accepted and approved. What that allows us to do is to go ahead and get the grant request. So it's kind of a strange process. What that does is that just tells us that we are eligible to go ahead and to apply for this grant, which was for the generators. And so Nick and Ron are actually going to a training in Sacramento tomorrow on how to, it's a very arduous process, and how to complete this grant. So hopefully, when the dust all settles, we will be successful and we'll be getting a little bit over a half a million dollars worth of generators, and we will be all set. That will power everything in the city. For us, for the city. So that's pretty exciting, I'm excited about that.
But it's a very good, big step, because if we didn't, because we couldn't apply, so they did a good job getting that put together.
Yeah, and that all hinged on us finishing our hazard mitigation plan, which you guys all participated in. And so being that we have completed that and it's been accepted by CalOES and FEMA, then that makes us eligible for this grant. So it's nice to have good news once in a while.
Agreed. Thank you, Nick and Ron, for taking on a workshop on how to fill out an application for a grant.
Yeah, we're actually going tonight after noon.
So amazing. We'll try to get through it, okay? No danger? Okay, Chief?
Police Department's buying coffee tomorrow, Renee's from 7:00 to 10:00. Anyone that's interested, copy the copy. The other thing I wanted to report is that just, as you're aware, the council accepted USDA grant that we applied for for the K-9, which we got $38,000, I believe, from that. But I just got word last, late last week, that a proposal that we put in with the Sean Walsh K-9 Memorial Foundation was approved, and with that, what they do is they'll pay for the cost of the actual police dog, which the dog itself is around $10,000. And just quickly, I wanted to, you know, talk about that foundation, is Sean Walsh was a, was a 21-year-old young man who was a police explorer in the Bay Area. He joined the National Guard and got sent to Afghanistan and was killed in combat in 2011. His dream was to become a police officer and be a K-9 officer, so his mother and family started this foundation almost immediately after that to purchase police dogs for agencies around the state. And believe at this point, there are about 30 K-9s that they funded. So we're excited about that, and we still have some other funding issues that we haven't yet worked out, but we're getting closer to being able to implement that program.
Awesome. Fantastic, Dave. Thank you. Kevin?
When you're done having coffee with the cop tomorrow, you can swing on by over here, we're hosting a downtown retail enhancement workshop with the topic mainly being without sign. We've had a number of complaints regarding some signage in the downtown area, so we've invited the downtown merchants to kind of come talk through some potential solutions, and then also trying to build more towards, you know, maybe some future guidelines for the downtown area. So this will be the first of a series of meetings to try and be, you know, polite about times, we're hosting one from 10:00 to 11:00 tomorrow, and then another at 5:00 to 6:00, so we can try and capture as many folks as possible. But the general public's invited, it's geared towards the downtown merchants, but anybody's invited to attend.
Where's that now?
It'll be right here in the city council chambers.
We have APC in here tomorrow, don't we?
Yeah, we do.
We'll, we'll make sure we're out of your way, we'll move...
Well, I'm just thinking, because it's not our usual meeting time, if they let you know, did you know that?
Well, we can move over to a front cop, to a different conference room, it'd be just fine.
Okay, sorry.
We'll change signage up and get out of the way for APC.
I did forget to mention one thing, I missed one thing. They're going to start construction on City Hall Friday, so it will be really busy around here, and we're moving community development to that conference room till the, till the work is done, so, hey, there, yeah, there'll be some new signage around here to direct people, but work will start on, on this Friday.
Cool.
Kelly?
No report.
All right. Andrea?
In addition to the pumpkin fest and the Ales Muertos event this Saturday, also just want to hope everybody cheers on the bicyclists with the bike challenge, and also watch out for the bicyclists.
Stacy?
No report.
Hey, no report. George?
No report.
And I have no report as well. Have a great night.
Have a great night.